Welcome to the Bound City Council. It's Wednesday, November 12th. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
We do have the police report that came in, but we don't have a police officer here. There was a fire call about six minutes ago that that may be where he is. So I sort of, whatever you'd like to do with that, we could just let him come up and speak if he shows up or however you prefer, but I don't know.
But he's not on the...
No, it was not on the agenda.
Yeah, but we have this here.
You do.
So we should put this into...
Yeah, we could just amend it into the reports at the end.
All right, everybody got the police report? So we're just going to amend that into the agenda. All right, can I get a motion to...
I want to pull A.
Oh, we're doing, we're just in the agenda first. Give me a second. Okay, so let's, give me a motion to approve the agenda with the police department summary.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda amending the ORNO Police Department report into the agenda. That'd be like item 8.5 or something.
Sure. Okay, we got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. All right, now we got consent agenda, and let's read them first and then we'll see if we want to talk about any of those. Does someone want to go through those?
Sure.
Okay.
Consent agenda, items A through D. A, approved payment of claims. B, approved minutes from the October 28th meeting. C, pay request number one in the amount of $232,845.79 to Widmer for project 2503. And D, pay request number three in the amount of $371,856.58 to GMH Asphalt for projects 2501, 2502, and 2505.
All right. We got those. Does anybody want to pull any of those?
I'd like to pull A.
Pull A, all right. Anything else? All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda sans A?
Motion to approve.
Okay, got it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. All right, B, C, and D pass, and go ahead Lonnie.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, I'm pulling A because I feel frustrated in the fact that every month we get this financial report, which is 30 to 50 pages listing every check that's been written, and it's like a void. We look at this information and something may look a little odd to us, but we don't have it in relationship. And so I'd like for us to direct the staff in coming up with a better financial report starting in 2026. You know, having run organizations my entire career, I would do reports that reflected the amount to date against the budget so you could see that. And we, we have no way of knowing what we're doing in terms of our budget each year by looking at this report, plus the fact that it takes 30 to 50 pages of paper. We could eliminate that by having a more efficient report. And so that was one reason I wanted to pull that agenda.
I like that idea, but I do like seeing line lists because I go through it every couple of weeks to see what amounts are going out. But I, but I think a more thorough look at it would be great, too.
So we get the, I think it's like maybe quarterly or every, maybe like once a month, but there's a page at the end that gives us like the super high level, you know, like the balances of everything, but it's not really super clear.
At the end?
Yeah, I forget what the title of that report's called, but...
Well, it's in here.
And the checks aren't the same every month either?
No.
So I mean, they would have to be like just spelled out with the ones that are written?
It's sort of like micromanaging, I feel like, and I'm not sure that a lot of other cities, I did talk to a colleague in Minnetoka, and they don't get a report like that.
So you're saying...
They're a bigger city. So, I mean, if, if the, the idea of this is for us to be able to do some sort of overview, management, supervision, looking at just amounts doesn't help me know if we're managing the budget, if we're over or under. It just tells me that there were five checks written for Microsoft for each of the program areas, or I guess one revelation this month was the liquor store buys a lot of THC.
Yeah.
You know, so, or whatever it is called. So people are having a good time amount, you know? So it, it's not informative.
So you want to see more than the fund summary at the end?
Yeah, I mean, I think it...
Like a run rate?
Yeah, to just give us a budget and against the budget, you know, what's been spent to date. We have a city manager, I trust our staff, that's their job to manage with the finance people, and that if there was some overage or, you know, inaccuracy, that they would bring that to us and say, you know, this is a change we need to make, or we're over or we're under, whatever.
Right, I like that because it does provide some clarity and truth and...
Disclosure.
You can actually go out and look at it, yeah, disclosure.
Yeah.
But I do like seeing the checks only, to your point, which is partially, I think, what Sheri's trying to say, which is, you know, this is showing the checks that are written out that looks like different, and they see batches, but I'm assuming they're running through different phones.
Yeah.
With the fund number.
It seems like the liquor store has about half the report.
Yeah.
Because it's all the, every single thing they buy is in there.
Right. Every time they buy beer, there's more beer bought.
Yeah, there's multiple pages of it, but so, you know, I guess I'm more concerned about the top level, like are they making money or not? And is that hope or town, you know?
And we get that from them, you know, the liquor store does give us that year-to-date report, so we do see that.
But I also do like, I like seeing it, and I'll tell you, there's been times where, you know, Jesse and I have talked to him, like, well, what is, a lot of times the description doesn't, doesn't, I don't know what that is. And I'm like, why are we spending so much, you know, thousands of dollars on a cellphone bill or something like that?
And we all peel through, you know, I do the same thing.
$128,000 to Pember Company as well, it does say loss like cost improvement, so we can circle back to see if it made sense, but I, I like that, and I think maybe we should add that as a priority for our priority list.
Yeah, there's probably like 10 different ways to do it, you know, like what do you want the report to say?
Well, I'd leave it up to the staff to come back and recommend what they think would be a useful financial review tool for us.
Yeah, because they manage the budget, and they do a good job of that, but it'd be cool to see the breakdown of it. I think the only variable is like, we'd have to consider, like, isn't it twice a year when the property tax increments like go in? So it could look like we're like getting way ahead when we're not. I don't know. That might be the only moving...
But you, but you can indicate that.
Like the fund balance will look super low, but it's really not.
Right, right.
I'm sure he's amortizing that.
I've, you know, line itemed it for years, and, you know, are we buying things on Amazon that we could get cheaper than if we went somewhere else, right, or Home Depot, and it's not even our city? Or do we support, you know, our hardware store? You know, and again, there's discussions on that all the time. Sometimes they got to get something quick, right? If there's some issue that they got to fix, but I guess we dork it out in our finance meeting, right? So, which we're having Tuesday morning again. So I'm fine reading those numbers like that, but we get it randomly, not in the packet like this, though.
Yeah.
So I think we, we're maybe a little bit more on top of what's happening behind the scenes, so...
Well, maybe in that's...
Maybe you should have more of those every time.
Well, no, I don't necessarily think that all of us need all of that, but maybe if the finance committee is rethinking its responsibilities.
Right.
If you're the ones to, to sort of scrutinize the line items, you know, I just think that this is, you know, I mean, I've been doing this for now for seven years.
Yeah.
And every time when I go through it, I just think, why am I doing this? You know, I ran...
How does this help me?
Yeah, I ran nonprofits for 30 years, and I never had to give the line items on my checks. I mean, now if a check for me, it was over like $5,000, then we reported that. So you could do that, you could say over a certain amount, but you know, to see, like when they were changing out phones, I guess, in the last couple of months, to see every single phone, they're all the same. What was the page, point of having a page with, you know, those five things on there that wasn't value added for me as a councilperson?
Well, I appreciate that transparency to know what each of us...
Well, yeah, it's transparent, but you know, do we really need to know that? I mean, we have a city manager, we have a finance director. I think that that's within their job and that we're to be a little bit above that. I don't think we need to be doing as much micromanaging as this is...
He has limits that he can do on his own.
Yeah.
And actually, we've talked about that, too, because we want to replace this projector, and he has all rights to just do it. And through our conversation, he's like, well, plus he didn't know what the building, right? But I was like, just go buy, you know, fix the problem, right? You have the budget, you can do it. Do I need to see the little, you know, at the same point, you know, we're responsible for people's taxes.
Well, we could have a policy that acquisitions over...
We already do.
A certain amount.
We already do, and so I said, well, just go buy the TV. If that, if you think that's right, you're the, you're running our city, go buy the TV. And I think he's going to go buy it. I don't know if he did yet, but...
It's going on sale here.
It's going on sale, see, he's a good city manager.
I don't know, we could just do like priority for next year is to ask for maybe like a few different versions of what they think might answer our question.
Then we go into next last month.
Like, do you like this one? Do you like this one? You know, the info, what info do you want?
Well, I think it should just be a high level.
This is from...
I like the, I like to see all the transactions.
Me, too.
So I would leave that in there, but I would say a summary would be helpful. How does this relate to...
The year.
You know, the year, you know, because again, we, we don't meet all the time, but when we do meet, and we're looking at the budget, I mean, it's, we are kind of seeing that, so maybe, maybe they could just translate, update that file.
Yeah, if it was like, then you just update it.
We're talking on Tuesday morning, maybe we can sneak that into the conversation. We're meeting the finance committee, so. Or if you have other ideas with other cities, maybe get it to Jesse, and then we can work on, work, do that with our priority list.
Well, I would, I would leave it to the staff's discretion.
But they want to get what you want.
Yeah.
So maybe show them where to go.
So one of the things that we'll need to do is take a look at what the requirements are for payment of claims and what the city has to have in front of it, counsel for making its approval. I'm just doing a quick research into some statutory requirements. Doesn't mean you can't have, and even if we have to have an itemized list like this so we can approve the payment of claims, it doesn't mean that you can't have more information provided. And I think, I'm sure, I think in my discussions I had with the council member before the meeting, it sounds like that's, at a minimum, that's what she's looking for, is to give some context to what's in front of her.
Okay. Yeah, like I see Maury's Buffalo Ford 4100 repair truck, number 420, right? I mean, it kind of explains it all, replaced the air vane, cut holes and for plow mile and blah, 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 four grand, right? I mean, we have to approve it, but it's already spent, right? And but you could, we can call you and you can talk about it, but instead of doing all that, is there a better context that you can figure out so that...
I would say just from the standpoint of how much detail we do provide, we're probably more transparent than the average city.
Most.
And I think that's, was a council directive previously, and it certainly doesn't need to go away, but you know, we do these monthly reports, but I think something, basically what I'm gathering is something a little more easily digested, and that would be good for the resident, too, so I think we can put our heads together and come up with something.
Okay. But again, keep the list, but on top of that, maybe do a summary at the end or something.
Well, Michelle just pointed out to me page 2900, which I've never even seen this. This is a total breakdown of the general fund and water, all the funds. So I don't know if this is not part of every packet, but this shows a lot more information than I think Sheri, what you're asking for.
What did you say, 2900?
2900, it's at the very end of the agenda packet.
Yeah.
So we do include that once we close for the month on the council. So it's not every month, sometimes we're behind, maybe six weeks, but that's what we do include. We can spruce it up, get it more, you know, intuitive and more detailed, absolutely.
Yeah, this is nice to see.
So, yeah, like the other one here is this budget reporting for the month of September. I think if we had those each month and then cumulatively had them in one file, would it be go to and pull up?
Yeah, we can break...
I don't know if you have that on the website or not.
Absolutely, we can break all nine months, we'll break it up more and maybe do some graphs, make it look a little more.
Visual?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
That would be great, yes. Good, good idea, Sheri.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You good with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, and then do you want to make a motion to approve that?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve A on the consent agenda.
Okay, we got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Those opposed? All right, A is passed now. Number five, we're going to go comments and suggestions from citizens present, present that their item is not on the agenda. If you want to come up, we'll give you three minutes. Welcome, can you give us your name and address?
Yep, Lisa Anderson, Scott Reed.
Scott Reed.
We're at 4754 Manchester Road. So we're here to talk about something that has been a complaint that has come in...
On going.
That has gone into the city a couple of times about 4762 Manchester Lane. I think Kathy, you may be familiar with that. I don't see Andrew here, Andy here, but he's certainly familiar with it as well.
And, and this is Val's neighbor?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Val couldn't be here tonight, so I can't speak on her behalf, but you know, she has concerns as well. So as we understand that the permit was granted for a fourth driveway to put in at the residence, that's still under the ground coverage, that's great. We are all for people improving their, their property, but what I don't feel has been addressed is the junk in the yard and the, the amount of storage of things in the yard. So if I look at our city ordinances, it talks about excessive storage of items in the yard. I don't know what the definition of, sorry, a little nervous, excessive is, and then the other ordinance about accumulation of junk, debris, rubble, or construction materials. I don't know what is considered accumulation. But if you look at the property, and I think there's been several people out to that property, it's got a lot of stuff.
What's the address again?
Yeah, what's the address again?
You actually have photos of it, too.
4762.
62 Manchester Road.
Yeah. And while I think, you know, it may be a, coming down to a little bit of a neighbor, you know, not liking each other, and I think, you know, I can probably say the neighbor's a little salty because I actually called the city and said, I think he needs a permit for the excavation that he's doing on his property. He did need a permit, and he did come out and he had to put in that black piping for erosion so that the dirt would not go into, you know, the water, the water, the water system. But I just feel like our voice as residents, it's not being heard as far as, you know, if I were to put my house up for sale, that would be a deterrent, definitely be a deterrent.
It would drop our property values down majorly.
So, yeah, so I'm just asking if that can be looked at or considered again.
May I approach with these photos?
Yeah, please.
And I also have photos from this evening, too.
Okay.
On my phone.
Yeah, so just a couple of things, I know we only got...
Makes it difficult for us to back out our driveway when he has a truck and trailer parked in front, directly in front of our driveway when he has room in his own driveway.
Okay.
Just, I only, I know we only have three minutes, so I just, the permit, how long is that permit good for, and is there an inspection done after that driveway is put in?
Jesse, can you speak to that?
Building permits are good for 180 days.
Okay.
They can be extended, but there's inspections, yes.
Okay, so I know that obviously he had to present a plan for what he was doing. Does it, the driveway bump directly right up to my property line where I have a very huge tree that I'm concerned if there's something not done right foundationally, it's going to affect that tree?
I don't know the specifics of where it's going.
Okay.
There are setback requirements, though.
Okay.
I believe that's at least a couple of feet for driveways on side lot lines.
Okay.
So they will need to meet required setbacks.
Okay, so somebody will be out and watching what that, because I'm assuming he's doing it himself and not having it professionally done.
Yes, it will be.
Which concerns me.
I did drive over there over the weekend, and I did see it was taking trees out and...
Yeah, and Val was very hurt about that, but I mean, that's...
And now we have logs laying in both backyards.
Right, yeah, I saw that. And you know, who do...
How long is that going to lay there for?
Well, and I, I have talked to Jesse, our city manager, about this, and Andrew Drilling, you know, who is our compliance officer.
Yeah, I've spoken with him a couple of times.
So I think we, we, I think you're alerting us to, we need to do a better job at keeping the residents who have a complaint, a valid complaint. Keep them in the loop of, of what is being done, even if nothing's being done to date, just you haven't been forgotten, and we have had several conversations about that. So hopefully this will help in trying to get a new process in place that we can keep ongoing problems on the radar.
Yeah.
And keep residents alerted to, to what's being done.
Yeah, we'd like to go out and sit out on our deck and be able to enjoy our backyard, but we have to walk out and look at all that garbage with a smoker, a pellet smoker with the attachment rotted off, two gas grills, construction materials, logs, everything else. We can't go out and enjoy our deck anymore.
Well, a lot of this falls under blight.
It's not, it's not fun to go out there anymore.
Right. And, and I understand that it's been difficult because your previous neighbor, you know, kept it beautiful, and that's, that's really tough.
And everybody's entitled to what they want to do on their property. I am just looking at what our city ordinances say and wanting to understand what is our definition of excessive and accumulative, because from my point of view, in my simple world, it's excessive.
Yeah, yeah. It, it looks pretty cluttered.
Yeah.
And like this evening, I came home from work, I had leaves blown and mowed in our driveway. He didn't have the consideration to blow those leaves out of our driveway, plus he has a truck and a trailer parked directly in our driveway, which he had to back in and out twice to get out of our driveway, when he has spaces in his driveway, his driveway, to park that truck and trailer.
Yeah. I mean, I can understand your frustration, and it sounds like Jesse, you guys are on top of it, and we'll keep them all in the loop on what's being done.
Yeah, I can give you my card here.
That'd be great. Thank you.
When was the first official complaint, complaint?
Couple of months ago.
Yeah, it was two, three months ago.
Yeah, I mean, and all, I mean, it was a struggle to hear back from the city, which is again concerning, because I actually walked...
Who did you call when you complained?
I actually came in to the city and spoke with somebody, so did my neighbor Val.
Who'd you talk to?
I talked to Andy at the time.
Okay.
I'm, I think maybe Val may have talked to Jesse the first time.
Okay.
Then she sent an email, because I think Kathy, she ran into you at some event and sent an email to Kathy that went unanswered for maybe three weeks, so she sent another email. That didn't get any attention, and then she sent a third, very powerful email, very frustrated email, and that's when she got a call from, I'm not sure who called her back, but she was basically told, hey, he's got the permit, nothing we can do about the junk. And so you can only imagine as a resident how that felt.
And who, who sent that email?
I don't know who called her back. I could certainly find out who, who did, you know, eventually make that phone call to her.
I, I believe it was Andy.
Okay.
Because I did just speak with, I've spoken to her several times. And, I mean, I really, I really understand the frustration because nothing is more maddening than just not being contacted when you've left message after message. And this started a year ago.
Oh.
You know, the ongoing issue...
He's been working on this project for two years.
Yeah.
All right.
It was, it was the fall before last that he started working on this without a permit.
Okay.
And I don't understand why you have ordinances and they're not being enforced when you're supposed to have a permit for that.
Yeah. Well, we're getting a little long on our three minutes, but...
Yep.
First of all, we have to have a complaint, right? So once that, if that was two years ago, shame on all of us for not following through, right? If it was only two months ago, these things take time, unfortunately, and it's terrible.
Yeah.
The attorney can talk to it, but we are, the last two years, we're really trying to get a little bit more teeth into, when we do send a letter, that actually something is going to happen.
Yeah.
Now that, just because you sent a letter, someone goes, yeah, my neighbor is, you know, mean to me, right? Tops. And then another month goes by, and then we say, these do, unfortunately, they take time. So now that you've come out, we're on top of it. I do want to talk maybe at the end of the meeting about our enforcement position as, as it is anyway, but I'll...
Great. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for listening.
We'll keep in contact with you. Anybody else? All right, here none. Number six, guess what? Congrats. You want to say something?
I was just going to introduce our new deputy city manager, so we have a resolution in front of you appointing Leila as the acting city manager. We thought we could, it's normally a consent item, but since this is her first meeting here, she's up for it, maybe to approach, and then we can spend a couple of minutes.
And I apologize, we just did a workshop, and she was sitting there, and I thought you already met everybody, so I apologize for that, but I've already had one meeting with you, but I was very, very excited to have you here, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you, mayor, members of the council. I'm Leila Mehe, I'm the new deputy city manager, and I'm very excited to serve your community in this role. I come from the city of Hopkins. I was there for five years as the special projects and initiatives manager, and before that, I was at the city of Shakopee, as well as with WSB, a consulting firm, as a planner. So have a lot of experience in municipal government, but very excited to get to know your community and work with each of you, and hopefully very few times as the acting city manager, except for that we hope Jesse takes, you know, a vacation or two. And, you know, I am happy to answer any questions that you have tonight. Otherwise, it's just great to get to know all you, and we had a great work session, so thank you for letting me be a part of that.
Yeah, does council have any questions?
No, welcome.
Welcome, Timon.
Do you want to take it better?
Yeah, I, I do. Are you going to be handing her anything, or do you want to...
What do you want to, what do you want to say?
Well, I mean...
If you'd like me to hand her something.
Shake, shake, shake.
Maybe Jesse, shake.
I certainly could, whatever you want. I certainly could, whatever you want.
Well, why don't you come up here, shake each other's hands, and I'll get the.
You wore a dress shirt today.
No, that's okay.
She's.
Well, that's fine. Who really wants to shake their hands?
Yeah, do it.
Well, whenever you want to hug, whatever.
Yeah. I'll just duck.
Great.
Cool.
Welcome, Timon. Here, I can shake your hand.
I didn't get a picture of that.
Yeah.
All right, so we actually have to do the resolution 2588. Does someone want to make a motion?
It's on page twenty eight sixty four.
I can do that.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion approving resolution two five eight eight.
Okay. Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, that passes. All right, number seven, we got, uh, public hearings. A action on resolution twenty five eighty nine adopting a street reconstruction and overlay plan.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do have two public hearings to be held today. These are in relation to basically our next five years of CIP, as we've, as we've kind of gone through the financial management plan, and as we continue to update that. Um, what we can do is, as a city, is hold one public hearing at the front end of this, what's called the street reconstruction overlay plan, um, which essentially preempts future opportunities for reverse referendums. So at this time, there's a, you'll actually see in the, in the packet, there's a very nice memo from Noah that lays that out, that, um, we're giving the public an opportunity to sort of see it all up front at once, and then annually, we'll come back to issue debt for these road projects over the next five years. On top of that, um, the the second public hearing is related to tax abatement bonds, which is basically a way of paying for bonds with specific properties. And then at the end of all of that, we have an actual bond issuance that does not require a public hearing, but is part of this overall conversation that's going to pay for portions of the, um, commons project, street projects over the next year, some sewer, and a number of other projects. Um, this was something that was going to be two issuances. We're doing it at one time for two years' worth of issuances is to save a few bucks from issuance costs. So, uh, Noah's here, um, Stacey's here from Ellers, is our representative there. We've got Matt Baumann, city engineer. We got Ryan Preach, public works director. All questions can be answered, but, um, first things first, I can pass it back to you if you want to open up the first public hearing, and then we can sort of go from there.
All right, I'm gonna open, uh, a public hearing on the adopting a street reconstruction overlay plan. If anybody wants to come up and tell us what you think. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Here none. Um, and on A, are we voting on that?
So yes.
Two eight seven seven?
Yes, two eight seven seven, and, um, obviously happy to ask or answer any questions related to that. Um, there's a list of all the roads in there. This doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily have to issue that amount of debt. This is just, uh, an opportunity to, like I say, preempt some of the future public hearings that would have had to happen in order to do that year by year. So we'll just kind of tee it up for the first five years.
Does council have any questions for Jesse or anybody else in the room?
I have some concerns about this. I mean, it feels like it came out of the blue. Um, I mean, first of all, talking about the tax abatements, I thought we already had all the money set aside for lost commons. So I don't understand where this is coming from. Also, with the street reconstruction plan, is this a new, what is it, what are you calling this?
S R O P.
Uh, yeah. I, is that something new that we're, that that we can utilize, or?
Noah.
So first about the park, we had the money set aside for phase one. Phase two, we were always gonna issue debt. So that's what we're doing now, we're issuing debt for phase two of the lost like commons. Phase one was, uh, paid for by the land sale. If that makes sense.
But we did have it in the budget to do this.
Yeah, this was always in the financial management plan. This is the last time we'll be issuing debt for parks, um, throughout the rest of the CIP. And I think I wrote a memo back in May when we were discussing this, that if approved, we will be issuing debt for this park-related project.
Okay, I missed that. Um, because we, in twenty twenty four, we.
I think it's confusing because there's two phases. The first phase was, we sold land for seven hundred thousand dollars. We utilized that to build the phase one. Now we're on to phase two. We can't cash flow that in a parks fund, so we have to issue debt, which we'll do. Then that point forward, the phase three that's in the CIP, we're hoping to build up our balances over time to pay for it. That's the plan as of today. Um, to talk about the S R O P, the city is, used to, um, special assess for properties. As part of the financial management plan, it was the goal of the council not to special assess moving forward in on the next generation of streets. So we're redoing all the streets from two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty, or nineteen, that were built. We're doing the next stage, the mill and overlay, keeping up the maintenance. A goal was not to assess, so we need to find another avenue to issue that debt, and this is it.
Did we, did we pass that to not pass on to properties, or when?
Uh, that was before us, before.
It was in the fall of two thousand twenty three as we built this out.
No, you took the.
To not assess.
To not assess.
Yeah, to not assess was, June of twenty four is when the financial management plan was adopted.
But the not assessment, that was, that's been longer than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that part of it.
Guess that was due to the worst damage issue.
You were like the last one to assess, yeah.
So we did get challenged on the last one. It is getting harder to prove the assessable value. We did cap out at sixty six hundred bucks in two thousand seventeen because of the the cost of the projects. Council at the time felt that no longer assess, and then this is our planned issue debt. It's still gonna be paid by the taxpayers, like all that, um, but that is our plan.
This whole thing looks like we're getting really close to our complete debt limit at sixty seven five. Um, I I I feel like I need more time to understand this. And I I'm not sure if I.
So we're not gonna issue any more debt that isn't already in the financial management plan. We need to be able to use a statute to issue debt, and this is the one. Stacy Quilving?
But we just issued debt in twenty twenty four.
We did for utilities.
Okay, that was utilities.
That's for sewer. So what we did in two thousand twenty four is we went back and between two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty four, we combined all that expense and issued debt, just, like, once again, to save on issuance costs, but that was utilities.
Okay.
Now we're moving on to streets, which is different, and that's why we also need to have this, is because it's not being paid for by the utility rates.
Will this affect what at that time, Stacy, we got the double A rating? Is this gonna affect our rating at all to issue this much more debt?
Do you want me to come up and speak in the mic and catch you?
Yeah, come on up. All right, give us your name.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor, members of the council, Stacy Quilving with Ellers and Associates, your, uh, financial advisor. So the question is, will, uh, issuing more of this debt impact your your rating? And the answer, simple answer is no. We look at that, and when we had our last rating call with the rating agency, we project going forward, and they've seen your long-range financial management plan, which is part of what they like in securing that double A that you have. But essentially, we've been forecasting that this will be coming down the pike, and so they like to see the reinvestment within your community, so you should be fine.
But this fits into the long-term financial plan. That's kind of like the, I think, the important part to mention, if I'm understanding that right?
Mayor, council member, that's correct. So this was all, these projects were input into the CIP as part of that. The, uh, street reconstruction plan that you're doing, the public hearing, is just one step that you have to do. Uh, then you have to, uh, come before each time with plans and specs for each of the projects. So the one that's before you is the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six projects that you will be actually issuing bonds for this year. If you're gonna do a bond issuance in twenty seven, then we'll come back before you get the plans and specs and what the bonds would actually look like for that.
So we're, I mean, having a public hearing, obviously, to, I mean, follow statute and be transparent, but this isn't a new expense. It's not, it's in our CIP, it's in our long-term financial plan.
What if you remember the one six, yeah, maybe Excel spreadsheet? Remember, you know, we had some bonds falling off, and then we had some coming back on? Remember that, Noah, right? So we've, we've seen this, it's just a different way of seeing it, I guess.
Well, I mean, you you look at our, the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six reconstruction and mill overlay, and then, you know, you get up to twenty seven and twenty eight and twenty nine, and it's a lot.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
So because this, Ryan, is constantly ongoing, that the the overlay, the mill, this never ends, does it? So is this something you're gonna have to look at every single year?
Mayor, council member, yes. We look at the numbers every year, and we work with staff to have those updated, uh, because they change. Those are estimates, right? And they try to put inflationary costs in there, but it is what it is, and once they know what the actual projects are that they're gonna fund that year, we'll look and we'll realign.
So if you have fifteen, twenty streets on the mill overlay for twenty twenty seven, that may not necessarily be accurate. We may have to add more.
If if you remember when we were talking about our budget in September, and and then I said something like, you know, if we can kick a project, you know, the next year, we don't have to do one of these projects, we're not doing it, right? At the same point, I think it was Matt, right? You were sh, you were showing the the time lapse of how long these projects last, the the arc or whatever, right? And then there's like that break even, and unfortunately, you know, we're already kind of tight as it is. So this is just a procedure to kind of do what we've already planned to do with our plan with, and it's more of a procedural thing versus, um, you know, when we come back in the future, you know, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty nine, that's gonna be, they're gonna come with actual, hopefully, harder numbers at that time.
And mayor, you hit the nail on the head. You're you're setting up a process, right, and setting the table.
Yeah.
For what you may do in the future. Annually, you make the decision about what streets actually get done and what you're actually gonna finance with debt. That will come back before you. What your bookends are is that basically every project that's listed in there is something that you can fund or not fund. If you're gonna add a totally different project that's not in there, we're gonna come back through another public hearing process. Also, we are capped at our maximum amount of what we would actually issue.
Right.
But again, debt issuance is an annual decision that you make based upon the projects that they're bringing forward.
It just, it just looks, when I look at this, like, you know, we've made a lot of progress with your help, you know, to to move, it looks like we're gonna move back to the twenty sixteen era of sixty grand, and, you know, and this doesn't even bring up our water, you know, with what we need to, and we're getting close to our cap point. So what if we have an emergency, what if, what, we don't know what we're doing with water. That's what, that's why this makes me nervous.
True, but that's why we're doing the utility rate study, to see if we somehow do get fifteen million. And we took the other fifteen million roughly. Um, how, how do we pay for this? And it'd be through the utility rate side. This is, you know, kind of a different subject per se, but yes.
And mayor, council member, that debt limit is only for tax-supported debt, one hundred percent tax-supported debt. So any utility debt that you issue does not account for that, right? So the utility portion of the debt that you're issuing in this bond issue doesn't count towards that debt limit. The tax abatement bonds that you're issuing as part of this does not count towards that. It's only a hundred percent tax-supported. And so that's generally gonna be street reconstruction bonds, uh, capital improvement plan bonds that you may do for a new city hall, new public works facility, new, you know, fire hall. Those types of things are typically what's traditionally counted against that, or any equipment certificates that you may have for large purchases of, you know, vehicles or fire engines or things of that nature, so.
And and in that, we do have a large purchase for the new sweeper, right? We're gonna need a new sweeper coming up, or sucker, lead sucker, whatever it's called.
So, yes, the back truck is gonna get moved from twenty thirty to twenty twenty seven. We've worked on updating the financial management plan. Our goal was still to cash flow that purchase and not issue, uh, equipment certificate at this point, so.
Okay. And how much is that looking?
Could be up to nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But we have, again, we all know the story. We have thirty little stations, and that's a, a tool we can't be without, so.
Well, but what's the next tool we can't live without? I mean, I agree with, um, Councilwoman McNe, I'll get that right. And, um, I'm not comfortable with this, because I don't feel like we've been given enough time to really research this. I mean, I didn't pick the information up till Monday, so that's partially on me. Um, this is a public hearing, and we have no one from the public, except for these three people, and I'm gonna guess they didn't know anything about this.
No, just Marty.
Yeah.
Just Marty, no.
And so that's a concern that I have. Um, I mean, I get that this is a G O and all that fun stuff, and I understand what she's, uh, what the lady from, um, Ellers is saying. I have to say, I'm not comfortable with this. I would like to see it tabled to our next meeting.
So let's table it, and then you guys can call them and.
I'd like to do more research.
Yeah.
I would too.
I mean, we are, as Kathy was mentioning, um, sorry, Councilwoman McNe, I have a hard time with that. Um, yeah, I mean, this just feels like we're getting awful close. I mean, I don't know, and maybe the lady from Ellers can, you know, explain it, but, I mean, this, it's the same pool of households that we're taxing as far as the estimated market value, but where in this calculation includes what they're already accountable for, for the school bond issue that was just issued last year.
That's, that's the school district. It has nothing to do with us.
But it's the same pool of people that are getting taxed.
But they don't have any control.
That's, it has nothing to do with us.
Well, it's, are the ability of this school district and, and the city.
Yeah.
Same households to pay back that debt. It's coming from the same pool of people. So, I mean, I don't know if that's part of that calculation or not. I would think or expect that it would be.
We got around the city.
I understand that.
Regardless of what the school district decides.
Understand that, but in that calculation is the M V, which is two million, two fifty, or two billion, excuse me, two hundred fifty million, which is the estimated market value of the households within our districts.
So how does that relate to the school district?
Because it's the same, you're paying as a household.
Oh, I know, I.
Taxes for the school and for any bond issues. This is a general obligation bond or a G O, whatever you want to call it. At the end of the day, your ability to pay your taxes is what they're concerned about. That also affects our bond rating as a city.
So, mayor, council member, um, you are correct. You can go ahead and change it. So the mayor's correct. You are only in charge of what you're, you're not in charge of the school's budget or the county's budget, essentially, that's out there. Your only way to pay for these roads, because you do not have enough cash, you don't have cash to do it, is to issue debt, and this is your only mechanism to do it.
We can also tax higher, but anyway, go ahead.
You could set a higher levy, but you have costs now that you don't have cash to pay for the projects. So we can delay the, or, you know, continue the public hearing, right, if that's what you want to do, or it's already closed, I guess, if you want to delay your decision.
Yeah.
Uh, but essentially, what we'll have is that we're gonna have to push off the sale of the bonds, so that's just, I look to Noah to make sure that we got cash in the interim, uh, because we do have projects and costs that you approved in checks tonight that are going out, that we were anticipating that we'd have bond proceeds. So, uh, this will push that sale out, and and we'll look to see what the implications are with that. But essentially, when it does come back to you in two weeks for approval, we, we need two-thirds approval, um, majority, uh, for that plan to be approved, and so that we can move forward with the bond issuance.
Well, I'd like to take a closer look at, if you look on page twenty eight eighty seven, when it shows the actual from twenty sixteen, we were up to sixty seven, and actual cost in twenty twenty four, we got down to thirty three, which is great. Projected in twenty twenty six, thirty three. But again, my concern is, this takes nothing into account if we have to do any financing for water.
I know, this is a completely separate subject.
I know, but I I know it's a separate subject, but we're getting so close to our limit money-wise. I I I'm concerned that, are we thinking far enough ahead to make sure we can deal with other problems?
So the whole point of the financial management plan was to get a grip on our debt issuance. So we're gonna issue as far as the plan, about twenty eight million dollars through two thousand twenty nine in total debt, not counting the water treatment facility. Currently, right now, we're at just about thirty four million dollars. We have a plan to manage our debt, and this is one step. We are coming up on twenty years of the street reconstruction projects that started in two thousand three. We can decide not to maintain them, right? But we do, we were not gonna be able to cash flow that entire process. We would never be able to do that. It's, it's an impossibility. We, I mean, we'd be levying significantly. We're talking like five, six, seven million dollars above what we're doing now of the eight point three million dollars we're living, just to cash flow that. I don't think that's realistic. I think this is a good plan. We did talk about this in the spring, that we were gonna be issuing debt for the parks and the streets. What we're doing now is we, we're laying out what our plan is for the next five years, and we're grabbing twenty six, because Mr. Baumann has started the preliminary aspects of the street, the preliminary work of a street, that issue one debt issue, excuse me, debt issuance to save on money. This is all within the financial management plan that we've discussed, and this is our avenue with state statute to issue debt.
So with the disconnect of getting to the top level of kind of what you're, what you're saying, can you explain that better?
Can you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You want to say what you're?
Well, you mean, my concern about, we're getting close to our debt limit. Uh, you know, we were at sixty seven, now we're at thirty three, thirty three, but isn't our debt limit, we can't exceed, where did I read that earlier today? X amount of money, which we're, we're almost there.
I don't want to talk out of school and miss a statute, so I'm gonna bring up the expert on that.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, mayor, council member. Your statutory debt limit today, based upon your market value, is about sixty seven million, and you, even after all of these bond issuance, if you did them all, and that's what it cost, you'd still have over forty million in debt issuance ability. And again, that's only counted for a hundred percent tax-supported debt. So whatever you do at the water treatment plant, doesn't count towards that.
So, but we're gonna be issuing every year for the next five years, my next four years, and not including twenty twenty six.
Uh, mayor, council member, that is definitely a possibility, and that was planned for in the plan, uh, so, because you did not have enough cash in your reserves, or could tax enough to be able to pay for those, so.
So as we looked, um, I can't remember the next few years, but we have, like, the long-term financial plan, or the levy was kind of, you know, small increases like we've been doing. This is all accounted for.
Correct.
In that, for the coming years. So if I'm saying this right, um, like, it's taxpayer-funded uh, debt, like, to get the streets, like, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not considered debt, it's a different kind of debt, right?
Well, still, yeah.
Am I saying that right? It's not, it's not, it doesn't count against what we can borrow. Am I making sense?
No.
It's in our plan, it's not additional. It's in our long-term financial plan, all of this.
Mayor, council member, yes, all of this is in your long-range financial management plan, which we spent a lot of time going through to get you on the path to be something that was financially, that you could support, uh, for your community and for your residents.
So our plan, you know, low levy increases over the coming years has this wrapped in it?
That's correct.
So if we deviate from this, we're deviating from our plan.
Correct.
Through our whole plan. So this is, we all, well, I think we all voted for a long-term financial plan.
We did, so you're, this is, you're showing us that, what we agreed on.
Yes.
And, and it's just concerning to me to go backwards.
It's big, I mean, but I think a lot of it is that it's also us showing, I mean, for people that want to dig into it, like, how much are the streets? How much are you guys spending on this, you know? And at least we can, we can say this is planned for, you know?
So to that point, what are we going to do about these? Like the water fund is $6 million in debt, again, our run rate anyway. I don't know if that's offset by something, but.
You're very close to 6.7. So that is part of the plan. So then the next meeting, we're going to be talking about utility rates as well with Ellers as we start them, them helping us set the 2026 rates. I want to touch back on Councilmember McEnney. Part of the plan that we developed was to limit our debt issuance as best we can. The current plan we have, our last debt issuance is in 2029. We're hoping from 2030 to 2033, we'll be able to build up enough fund balance not to issue debt. So that was, that was the plan from the start and that's where we're going.
And we're still with our, was it 2030-ish, 2030 to, to be at the levels that we need to be at with each of our funds? In other words, getting out of water, getting out of the hole, getting out of the sewer hole, right?
2030 is for water. Storm is another topic that we'll have to discuss early in '27, but yes.
Okay, so the, the five, six million that were in the hole for water, which we've talked about a lot of times, is we have a trajectory, if we stay on our plan, we will, 2030, if we stay on the plan.
If we're able to increase rates to the levels that within the financial management plan, that will occur.
And yes, that does not include the water treatment plant. So we need to stay on our plan and it's not a great number because we got to, we got to raise rates every year to stay back on, on our water plan without even thinking about a water treatment plant yet. Yes, we know that. And that's, this is where we are. And again, I think we've talked about this, like here, we all signed up for this and this is how, this is where we got here. But a lot of this we didn't do to ourselves, but we're trying to fix the problem and kind of get us out of the, the hole that we find ourselves in.
It's the first time I've had a plan in a long time.
Yeah, it is. And I appreciate all the work you've done to show us, you know, what's happening here. You know, my brain just needed more explanation because to me, I just feel like we keep going backwards, even though I know we, we all want to get us out of this situation that we were left with. And sometimes numbers don't look as encouraging as maybe we discussed earlier, but.
I think if we had the chart, I know we don't have it right now, but if we had like that, the Excel thing, that memory you saw some drought and some coming back on, but then at, you know, 2030, 2032, everything's looking a lot better around here.
Right.
If we stick to the plan the next how many years, right?
And we're paying off debt, we're adding debt on as we go, of course, but the goal is to limit it because that was a mandate from the council. The best we can do is right now is issue debt through 2029 and then the last four years not issue debt while still maintaining our streets.
And the other concern I have is, you know, we're projecting on these 27, 28, 29, which is pretty substantial. I mean, a lot could change by then. That, that's why, that, that's what brings me concern going into the future that maybe the best like plans aren't going to get us out of that.
There's rarely a CIP schedule where there's something that isn't added that we did not foresee. We just have to live with that and do the best we can with the plans we have. There's going to be times that comes up where all we have to do this street, we have to do this force main. That's going to happen, it happens every time.
So then do we re-forecast or no?
Yeah, we absolutely, we have a model that Ellers helped us develop, Stacy and Kyle, that we're able to forecast that out. Additionally too, we're still going to be issuing debt responsibly based on the plan. We know our mandate and part of it is we are issuing one debt for two years to save on money.
Well, I mean, I, I completely trust your expertise in this and obviously with Stacy's help, you know, and I, I guess there's just nothing that can make me feel great about this other than stick with the plan. And we'll see our benefits.
We're in a heavy infrastructure industry, cities. We have to maintain them and it's not realistic to cash flow the amount that we have coming up in the five years. It just isn't.
I know we're not talking about the levy right now, but can you just tell us, why, why shouldn't we just go up to 15% on the levy, right? Instead of doing something like this?
I, I don't know if we'd get to those dollar amounts to be able to cash flow. We're talking about major street projects that are coming up.
So even if we went up another nine or 10, depending on what we do.
It wouldn't, yeah.
You, you can.
You'd have to go up another nine, yeah, and then when we start getting to, I think 2027 and 2028 is when we start getting two to three street projects in a two-year period and the numbers just get daunting.
Right.
It was a major step. We are levying over a million dollars in the street CIP fund. We were doing 200,000 not that long ago. It is a major step that we've taken. But you can't get 5 million, that's, I don't think that's a realistic option to do every year, just in this.
So the other option is, okay, levy this or we just delay and we just see what happens with the roads. And obviously with Jesse, you know, we talked about that and we, in our finance, we, the four of us are usually talking too of, okay, what exactly can we push off or, you know, do we need to do things? And I think, I don't know if it was you or Eric, but, you know, I know we, we did push a project or delayed it a little bit if we could.
Conditions-based. We always look at conditions. We don't just do a project because it's on the CIP. Typically, it's on the CIP, it's been a problem for two years prior and we're just doing it now. So what you're doing is you're kind of resetting the clock on your streets with the 20-year that you were discussing.
Right, yeah.
And that's what we're, that's, we're just, because we started in 2003 and now it's 2025. And then we're starting that first street that we touched way back then.
I think we had a half hour debate about push, push it up if we don't have to do it, like let's not do, you know.
Can you, can you talk for those of our residents who are listening, that this is probably, probably, you shouldn't even have to disclose this, but what's the difference between reconstruction on all these streets that you show? And then we know what Millan Overlay is, but the cost for reconstruction has got to be pretty considerable.
In 2017, we, we were forecasting this out because we knew this was coming. We thought Millan Overlay would be very inexpensive. They've turned to look like street projects of back then. I'm going to call Matt Baumann to the stage.
Okay.
And maybe he can give a better update for that.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. One more time on the question.
Well, just tell us a little bit cost-wise, the difference between reconstruction, that's redoing the whole street versus Millan Overlay?
Roughly, it's probably 20 to 25% of the cost to do a Millan Overlay versus the reconstruction. It varies a little bit depending on how much of the, like the curb lines that need some adjustment or some of the, the other utilities we need to just make small adjustments to, but that's generally what, what the difference is. And then the, the extent of the disturbance is, is really what people will see the most because we're doing work outside of the curb and into their yards or past the, still generally in the right way, but into the yard. So it, it affects them a lot more.
Which is what they did on West Edge, which was they ripped the entire thing out and came up 15 feet into the yards and so on and so forth.
And, and that one was a little more than usual because of some of the, the Med Council pipe that was in the area as well.
And that was considered reconstruction?
That's a full reconstruction.
That's a full recon.
And so we will Millan Overlay if we think we can get another 20 years out of the pavement. But if the utility is below ground or showing some distress or we think they're under, they're, they're showing that they're undersized, then we would default to doing a reconstruction.
That's a helpful explanation for people to understand the difference. That you, you try to get, you try to do Millan Overlay whenever possible.
Yeah, that's, we, we default to that to, to the extent we can. It's usually, it's conditions-based of depending on what distresses the road is seeing. Then we'll decide if it can be reconstructed, Millan Overlay. Some can be reclaimed, so we can actually still do a similar process, but we're staying in, within the curb line. So that's kind of a balance between those costs.
And part of that determination is you look at the pipes underneath?
Is what we're doing right now with the feasibility study for the 26, 2026 street projects. So we, we have a general idea just by driving them, but then we get soil borings and we evaluate everything in more depth. And then we'll come back with what our final recommendations are and then we'll go to final design.
But again, from my understanding, a lot, when you make the decision on reconstruction versus Millan Overlay is what is going on underneath? The road with pipes and age and?
What you can see above and then, correct, so some, some of what you can't see, so we get soil boring. So we can see several feet into the ground at, at specific spots and that kind of reinforces what we, reinforces or sometimes redirects what we think needs to be done.
Okay.
So like West Edge has such a heavy traffic load and that's increased through the years. They upgraded some, whatever that's called, the underlay.
Yeah, the, the subgrade, yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah.
What's called.
All right, thank you.
So, I think this is Noah though. This abatement portion of this, so it's taking away the tax levy from these 12 properties. So what was that tax revenue used for that's not going to get it anymore? Like, we were using that tax revenue was all across the CIP or what, I mean?
For, all across the city. So we're just assigning that to issue the debt for the park.
Okay. So then that revenue is not going to be in the budget for that anymore. It'll be over in the, paying for the park.
We'll be still, we will still receive the same amount of tax revenue that we're planning for.
Okay.
So we're, we're signing it to pay for the park debt service.
So we're just dedicating it basically to the park debt service?
It's, it's sort of like, yeah, you're exactly right.
Is that part of showing, like, we have to show that we have a plan, how to pay it back? So you have to kind of, like, use that to quantify the amount?
To issue debt through that state statute.
Any other questions for anybody?
Thank you, Noah.
Thanks, Noah.
All right, does Council want to chat about this?
Just 7A?
We're just on 7A still, yeah. There is a resolution on 2877 if we're comfortable. Uncomfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with it because I know it's in, I don't have the slide. It's from, you know, way back now, but like in the long-term financial plan, knowing that this is kind of like baked into that and that we have the plan and it's part of what those future levy increases are. I don't have any questions.
Well, on these kinds of things, maybe it would be nice before this gets on the agenda to say, hey, to refresh your memory, you know, go back and, you know, relook at what we've discussed because, you know.
How it ties into the picture.
Yeah, how it ties into this because we go through so much of this day, you know, every meeting that it kind of gets lost sometimes in the translation. So maybe going forward, when we have something of this magnitude, maybe, maybe it's just me, I have a bad memory. Just say, hey, reboot, go back to April and look at this and that'll bring you up to snuff here with why, where we're going forward with this. Because I know we've talked about it and obviously we all agreed on it and why suddenly I'm feeling nervous. That would help me to go back and refresh my memory.
I don't know that I can support this at this time. I really need to do a little more homework and get a little more information. And I don't feel like I have my questions formally formatted to ask at this point. That's on me, but.
Yeah.
Do you think going back and looking at our previous discussions would help you?
I mean, and I did try to do that, but unfortunately the website, our minutes and stuff is down, but that's.
Yeah, I know, they'll pick up, yeah.
Councilmember Pugh?
Well, I do remember a commitment from the past, so I guess I'm okay with it.
Okay.
It's never good to have to put into debt and to tax people more, but, you know, I think we, we did set up a good plan with the tiers and keeping the levies low. So I think we put in the thoughtful work that needed to be done.
All right. I mean, three of us are comfortable, so we can move forward unless we want to table it for two weeks. We need four?
That's what, four, right?
Oh, I thought it was three out of five.
Supermajority.
Oh, it's supermajority, okay. You're not comfortable voting tonight?
I'm not, but.
Okay. Councilmember McEnney, are you comfortable?
Well, I, I don't know if I'm comfortable with, with this until I can go back. If you could just point me back to our graphs and charts so I can see how we got here.
Yeah, I think we can do a refresher on the financial management plan. I do think if we do table it, we're tabling the other two for tonight as well, I would assume. So we'd be, we'd be done for the night and then we kind of regroup what we want to do.
Can you just bring this into a PowerPoint, get that Excel spreadsheet that shows?
What we agreed on?
All our long-term, you probably have it teed up for levy discussion.
No, I have to caution, we are redoing the financial management plan and updating what the updated costs as we go and which we will always do. So it's not going to be dollar for dollar.
Right.
That's going to be impossible to do. But we can show you that our plan is to issue debt as we start the first phase of the street projects because we can't cash flow it. By 2029, we're hoping to have enough fund balance where we can cash flow 2030, 2033. That was always the plan. And it was always not to use special assessments. That was, that was the goal of the financial management plan from the start. And this is the only avenue we have to issue debt to continue on with our street maintenance, long-term, longstanding street maintenance program that the city's had, the Millan Overlay every 20 years and to reconstruct after every 60 and do crack seal between every four and nine years.
So I guess there's just a little disconnect tonight, so are we, we're not blowing the alarm here if we table it for two weeks?
I don't think we're blowing the alarm. But if we, if we're not comfortable issuing debt, even in the future, then I think we have to relook at our 2026 street projects, but.
Let me clarify, I'm not afraid to issue more debt. That's, I just want to understand exactly all the details around this whole thing.
Yeah.
I just don't feel like I've had enough time to.
The difference is we're in the finance committee, so we're just, this is just like, this is just table stakes for me and Councilmember Caslano.
And again, maybe if we just got a little refresher course prior to these meetings, we wouldn't have to, you know,
So, yeah, I mean.
Make you have to wait two more weeks to, for us to go, oh, it clicks, I, I got it.
And I think the street, the SRP maybe is, it, it is a new thing because we're not special assessing. So we have to access another state statute.
Right.
But you are in control the whole entire time. What we're doing is we're, we're grouping together so we can do the 26 that we've already allowed the preliminary testing to do. I think you guys want to do the 26 street projects. Now is the time to issue debt to cover the 25 and the 26 and one debt, one debt issuance.
So what, you just said the 25, we haven't already covered that?
Well, that's in here.
Yeah, the 25, so that was, that was part, and that got.
I mean, I saw that in here.
And so that was delayed because we want to issue with the park too, as we were finalizing the parks. We need to have hard numbers on the park before we can issue debt. So that's why I issued that memo saying moving forward, we are issuing debt on the streets and we are issuing debt on parks. I should have called that out better, that's on me, but.
Well, you've done a great job.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I, I just, I just need a little more visual help getting me up to speed on this stuff. And, and I think from day one, I've said, I understand it better when I see a little backup.
I, I think perhaps if we just ran you with what our debt estimates would be for the year. And I, I know I did it through 26 as a point to making that we are paying off debt and we are adding debt back on, but our total debt is similar. I don't know if Jesse could go to that page.
Well, and to explain how we were at, you know, we went from 60, I can't remember, 67 to, then we're going to be 33.5. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, here it is. No, that's not what we're talking about. How we stayed for 25 and 26 at 33, still issuing debt?
Because we're paying, I mean, because we're paying off.
Because we're paying in between.
And that's the point of it. We want to, it's unrealistic for us to get the debt this early, this low, because we do want to maintain everything. So we are, we do have a plan to management. And the other thing is, I'll just repeat myself, our, in the plan as of right now, the last time we're going to issue debt is in '29. And then we can do the last four years of the CIP that we have scheduled off of fund balance and utility rates. Now that's a hill to climb and there will be some pain as we do that as well, but that is the goal. So we do have a plan, but we can spell it out better, absolutely.
So we need four fifths. I know Councilmember Pugh is going to be gone next meeting. So assuming all four of us, it's just the three out of four.
And we'll also be talking about utility rates at that time, that we need to. Kyle will be here to present what his recommendations are for the 2026 rates.
I might, I might, with the statute, is it, is it four fifths of the entire council or four fifths of the quorum that's there? At the meeting, okay. Well, I mean, it's supermajority, sorry.
Supermajority.
And supermajority with his.
So even if there's only three of us, two of us could pass it, two out of three.
I don't doubt I'll have any problem with this. We, we did agree on it. I just need a refresher course, how we got here.
And that would be the time to, we can activate with Kyle too to kind of give us some insights where he can. And that would be the time to, we can activate with Kyle too to kind of give us some insights where he can throw that slide. He has it already, I've been using it already, what our, kind of our debt plan is, but it might not spell out everything you want at this point. We can have that updated and thrown in there as well. I guess what I'm hearing is we're going to table it and bring everything we have tonight to the 25th meeting? Okay.
With just a little more clarity.
Yep, we'll work on that for sure.
I, I think it's going to help residents too because I think everybody needs to know how we're getting here. Even though I know we're all, as a group, wanting to get us in the best position. You know, all, all our residents want to see us out, but...
It's a big step.
Yeah.
And we're coming up on the 20 years, so now that was the time, right? The last five years, we didn't have to worry about this, right? We were just doing crack seal and some minor street stuff. Now we're entering that second generation as well, so it's a big deal.
That's helpful to hear too, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I just give a motion then to table, uh, specify both?
What's, so table, you can just do table seven, seven, you can do seven, well...
Seven A and B?
Yeah, let's do the public hearing, seven B first and then table it.
Why, why would you have to do public hearing if we're going to do it next week anyways?
Well, because if you have to do the public hearing now because it's a matter, because you have to do it later. I mean, you can do it any way you want, but...
Oh, then we could say we did both the hearings.
Yeah, because we did both the hearings, it was noted, because, because it was noticed for today.
Oh, if we don't do it then...
Well, but even though you, even though you don't need to put the notice for, for a continued public hearing, another public hearing can be made at this meeting without doing anything, but you did notice it for today. And that's the only reason I would say, I would, so I would say, intruding it differently, take 7A. You can do a motion to table it, then go to seven B, open the public hearing, close it, and then do a motion to table that one.
Got it, okay. All right, can I get a motion to table 7A?
I'll make the motion to ta, table 7A.
All right, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Seven.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that, 7A is tabled. Uh, 7B, we got action on resolution 2590 approving property tax payments related to financing Phase II improvements to block slate comments. I'm going to open a public hearing now. If anybody wants to come up? Hearing done. I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I get a motion to table 7B?
I'll make a motion to table 7B.
All right, can I get a second?
Routine. He's a second person.
Second.
Okay, second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes. Uh, so I guess we're tabling number eight too then? Okay, can I get a motion to table number eight? Anybody want to make a motion?
I don't want to table them, so...
Okay, I get, I got it, I got it. Who wants to table number eight?
I'd like to table, sorry, I make a motion to table item number eight on the consent, oh no, on the, yeah, the sent agenda, sorry.
No, this is, this is the regular agenda.
On the regular agenda, all right.
Down here, down here, down here, okay. Sorry, all right, I make a motion to table item number eight on the agenda.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, that's tabled. Uh, number eight, five was pleased, he's not here, um, so I'd say let's just move on from that. Unless anybody wants to have a discussion on anything that's in their board or police room. All right, number nine, we got comments and reports from council members, Councilor Pugh?
Um, well, we had the fire meeting, um...
Thank you.
Last week, and we're making progress. We left the meeting with three items to be resolved. And it's basically down to our fire department in, in St. Bonnie reaching some compromises on issues specifically around our retirement, um, system. We have lump sum and a monthly payout, whereas they only have a lump sum. And so resolving that issue will probably be the thing that will help us move forward in the future on that, so that's it.
Let me, can I expound on that just a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, so the other thing in that, so what she was saying was the lump sum versus pension. So we got two different pensions, right? That the relief association, association does. We're trying to merge those into one, you can only have one plan. You can't have two. You got to merge it into one and they got to agree and the relief association, 51% have to agree on the plan. We're kind of caught in a pickle right now on that. So what we're going to try to do is me and, uh, I'm actually one of the trustees of the fire relief association. That's just by nature of this job, this mayor thing, but... So we're doing that and then going to try to meet with a couple, maybe not too many people in the room and see if we can kind of see what we can all agree on and if we can move forward. If we can't, this can kind of kill the whole deal. So we'll have to kind of see what we want to do if it's...
How do you feel about this deal? How do you feel about where we're going?
It's a long process and it's, when we got into this, and Councilor Larson would probably say this too, both of us were like, let's go, let's go, let's go, it's just, you know, we know we want, you know, the, the firemen, they, for the most part, they wanted it, you know, at the, at the start. I mean, very well overwhelmingly, like, don't not do this, right? They wanted it. You know, a year and a half or however long it's been now, um, we haven't even got to the budget. So, I mean, we were, we're trying to get going like January, this whole thing. Like, we were supposed to be signed on, you know, in June on this whole deal. And, no, I mean, it, the average is five years before you even get, you know, so we were already now, what the chief will say is, well, we've been chatting about this for 10 years, you know, already before we even started getting to the, to this part. So, yes, I mean, it's, it's, it's not that hard, but it's hard. It's, it's interesting and, you know, these two pensions that, you know, it's a big deal. Um, they got to, they got to figure them out. And it's, you know, yes, we have, you know, 2% money, you know, we, you know, we kind of helped them put that in there, but it's their money, right? And, but their members have to agree on it. So we're talking retired people, so, you know, whoever's getting their check, right? And there's, you know, 30 of them or whatever that get in checks and they don't want to stop getting checks. Well, we're saying, well, what if we give you a lump sum payout and just buy you out and it's, you know... So, again, again, there's both sides and so one, you know, we have the pension option, which eventually those will kind of disappear because most, most of the people want the lump sum, they want a pension. And a pension is good, but it's not that good, you know, it's like, yeah, give me my money and I'll make my own pension out of it. So we're, we're stuck on that a little bit and then, um, so we're going to try to see if we can, over the next two months, figure that out. Uh, with, we, we have a, a date, January 17th or 12th or whatever it is, a fire meeting again. So we just kind of can the meetings for the next two months. I mean, it was every other week for like, you know, well, we've canceled a handful, but, you know, this is constant. Plus we have the fire commission every quarter, just like, you know, police, well, police is three a year maybe, anyway. So anyway, that's one thing. Then we got to go, okay, well, how, how are we splitting them, you know, the revenue to fund this whole thing, right? You know, Mound has all the assets, you know, St. Bonnie has all the assets, Minnetonka, in Spring Park, they've been paying in this contract for years. You know, how does that get resolved? Does it, I mean, we haven't even got to that part yet. And I'm, we've, there's been high level discussions on that and it's... We're not even, that's going to be the next thing. So if we even get to agree on the pension, then it's going to be that. And then can we come together? I think, I think we're all on same, we want it.
Yeah.
It's just how do we...
When you say you want it, are you talking about?
Everybody.
The lid, dis, whatever we're talking about?
Uh, joint powers.
Joint powers, okay.
Yep, yep. Um, you know, funny enough...
And Ornoise, he just signed their joint powers for their fire?
Yep, they're going kind of back, back in, so, um, I've just recently heard, uh, up north, Sandstone area, they're looking at doing some kind of, actually I think they want to do a lid, uh, lake improvement district. That's like a school district for a fire department. I said no, I don't want to do that.
Right.
Now, the good thing, it does take it off your budget on the city. The bad thing, but then it's like its own taxing authority and I just don't want to, that's a whole nother thing. I, I thought that was going to be harder to get, to agree on that. Although it's very similar, JPA and a lid are similar, it's just how, how the money gets funded. You know, we all, the council still agree and send the money to them. There'll be kind of a board that we would appoint, whether it's, again, that's, that's the other thing too. Then the governance and stuff, we still haven't agreed on that, so...
So you're ways out.
Pension, budget, governance, you know, some of these guys, you know, they do, um, the budgets or the numbers and stuff for the, our fire department. St. Bonnie does their own thing. How do we merge those two together? Does, you know, do we still do it as mound? Do we still get paid? You know, how do, what do, what do we get paid, you know? There's a lot of details to work out, so...
Well, there was a lot of conversation when this first got rolling that, you know, we want to try to maintain our mound, fire department, is that still?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, that's great, okay, thank you. I just, I've been curious where we're at with that.
Again, we're not even to that, that's like the last, last part. But, yeah, it would be the whatever JP, you know, whatever we want to call ourselves. And then it'd be mound fire in St. Bonnie.
Okay.
But big picture, it's still, it'd be called the Lake Minnetonka Fire Department or whatever we want to call ourselves, right? Um, we wouldn't rebrand our trucks, we wouldn't rebrand anything.
Good job.
And that's...
That's what we started out saying, we don't want to have to see happening.
But we, we would have a chief, right? Eventually we kind of have one and then maybe it's a couple deputies and then, you know... And that's my question is like, you know, as, you know, maybe down the road we have a different chief or whatever. Like, how does, how do all those guys agree? You know, they're all like camaraderie type people, right? And they're very loyal to their department. How do you combine the two? Now, it's, they do it all over the state, but...
Chief Peterson, you know, should have re-retired years ago. Is he still hanging on?
Yeah.
Hoping this gets somewhat resolved?
He's the one who brought this up, so he wants to do this, so, um, yeah, that's, yeah.
So are we working on all three of those issues simultaneously? Or are we trying to finish the pension and then move on to the...
Right now, the pension's a big sticker.
The pension's a big...
Yeah, so we really have to get through that or, or it's, it's just...
Is it planned administrators involved or...
Yep, we did, uh, the mound side paid. Remember, this came out of the relief money, so it's not our money. This is the relief's money, but, uh, was it, I think it was 10 grand that they paid for actuarial study. And then, you know, part of it's like, well, you know, the mound paid for that. Well, St. Bonnie, what are you doing? Can you guys pay for the next one or, you know, if we have to like figure this out, so...
So they still have to vote on it and everything once you get...
They're, both their members have to vote, um, whether, you know, if, even if they're retired, they still get to vote.
Yeah.
And to merge the two pensions, so if, if that doesn't... Is it 51% vote? Is that all we need?
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not horrible, but, you know, you get one person that doesn't want it and then, you know, they're all talked to, you know. I, I don't know, we'll see.
It is, yeah.
So following pension, what is the next topic of...
I'd say pension, budget.
Budget.
How we're going to, you know, split the cost between all the different cities. Because now we're talking, what, five? We already have four, so five, well, technically we have five already, so then we'd kind of have six. Shore doesn't really count. I mean, we'll probably keep them more as a contract. They kind of bowed out early because we have the far side of, uh, the island. They were part of the original discussions and then, are they still, they're not still there, are they?
Well, they've more or less...
They'll go with what we say.
Two departments to figure out their things and then they would, assuming the JPA has stood up, they would just stay on as a contract. Same way they are today.
And then number three was what then?
Well, uh...
Budget.
Well, then like how are we going to govern it?
Governance.
Because remember, all of us have to vote on this too.
Yeah, right.
If, if Sherry and I are sending this up, right, and it fails, then we just wasted two years of, I mean, this is a lot of work.
Yeah, I know.
This is not even, this is one part of what we do. Then you do all these other things that we do up here, you know, I know we're all busy. This, this project alone has been a whole bunch of work, a lot more.
Which we all knew and anticipated.
Right, yeah.
This is more than I thought.
But we haven't had an update in a long time, so I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah. You have anything else? Councilor McEnany?
Um, well, I guess, you know, just remind everybody that our tree lighting is next Thursday. And then I'm not sure how many of you guys follow, there's this young kid on, it's called Wandermore, Minnesota. Anyway, I followed him for, throughout his adventures when he was in South Dakota, North Dakota. But he's been in Minnesota and he just went through mound and took all the pictures, so I'm going to send you the link. I meant to, I was, I haven't been in the office all day. He was just here the other day and called me because I, when he was over in, I don't know where, Canton, Cassie or something, I'm like, when are you going to come up? You know, western suburbs and he goes, so he called because I wanted to take him around. And of course I, in a photo shoot downtown all, all week and I couldn't mean it, but he took some good pics and got around really well. So I'll send you that link to post on Facebook and Instagram. He did a good job and it's a really fun, it's fun to look at all the cities around. He's been fun to follow. Other than that, no, I don't think I have anything else.
All right, Councilor Caslano?
I don't have anything.
Uh, Councilor Herrick?
I don't have anything. Are you going to, oh, wait a minute, what about the, the Thanksgiving dinner? Yeah, talking about that? Let me get the sheet there.
Thanksgiving dinner, oh!
At the Legion?
Oh, um...
Or I can do it.
Um, I, actually there's a, oh, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, just so that everyone's aware and anyone that's watching, um, the West Tonka Food Shelf and the American Legion, and the DECA from Mount West Tonka High School, um, and a lot of the churches and stuff in different community. Friends and family are all invited to a free Thanksgiving meal. It's Thursday, the 27th, um, from 12 to 4 p.m. It is free, but I would imagine if you can make a donation or afford to, they would appreciate that.
They are looking for donations and it's hosted by the West Tonka Food Shelf. But also the Legion will be setting it up over there. And it's, I think they're, they're fifth annual, I think.
I've been, yeah, I've been to one of them and they do a great job.
Yeah, and there's, they get a lot of customers for the dinner.
Always does a beautiful job with the food that they prepare, so it's a nice way to get out, meet some of the people in your community, support the food shelf and the Legion, um, have a nice sit-down dinner.
Cool.
That's all I really got.
One thing I want to talk about, Jesse. With our enforcement issue, um, this has been going on for years. And I know it's something that I think as a council, we need to kind of just bring up again. I, I just feel like, and I'm not singling out who does our enforcement, I'm just saying the job and the different poles of that job, we, I think we need to reimagine. It feels like that part of the job is being this part and the other part of the job, in other words, the fire part of what he does, is this much. And this part gets left behind. When I first started council, that was one of the first things I said is we need to have a better, uh, update on when there's a complaint, right? Okay, now you're in the system. There should be some kind of, you know, work process of, okay, it's been two weeks. Shoot an email to the person that complained, hey, it's been two weeks, there's nothing going on. Hey, next week, there, you know, people need to be communicated with or then they come out like this and then it's, it's embarrassing for us and it keeps happening. This has been going on for way too long, so I think what you need to do, this is me saying this and you guys can agree on that, but, is you need to come back with us and say how we're going to fix this because it's been, I've been doing this, what, three years, whatever? Too long, four years, five years?
Well, you have three or five years.
And it's been the same thing. I wanted to budget in a part-time code enforcement person.
Yeah.
You know, because I understand that there's just not enough hours or days in the week for, you know, for what people's job descriptions are now where it's not, you know, personally a fault of their own, there's just not enough time.
Yeah.
I also think a police officer has to have a certain personality who's not afraid to be the bad guy.
And time too, you know, like...
And, and, yeah, and Andy is so swamped, you know, with the fire department.
Sure.
He's the most pleasant human being in the world, you know?
Well, and I've talked to Jesse about...
If you got a couple hours each day, it's just not enough.
Right, right.
And I've talked to Jesse before, I mean, if we can come up with a better tracking mechanism, kind of like, you know, if you work in the business world, there's a system that tracks work orders, so there's a process in place that would actually trigger, you know, once a week, somebody would see, okay, we had 15 complaints two weeks ago, have we done anything? Where are we, let's follow up. You know, I don't know that, I mean, that I would call out Jesse as being the one to make sure that everything got taken care of, per se, when it's really Andy's, or the position for the code enforcement officer's job to do it, but then Jesse's taking calls from citizens day in and day out, you know, and that's not really good, I don't wanna say that's a bad use of his time, but I'm just saying, we could probably manage the situation better with a process in place. The other thing, or the other component to this, which I think people are overlooking, is our ordinances, to a certain extent, are somewhat loose. Just like the couple that came up earlier and said, you know, what does an excessive mount mean? You know, and we don't really lay out exactly what, you know, the amount of, you know, blight is acceptable, and what are willing, are we willing to accept? We are very closely, you know, our lots are really tight in places, I mean, I know mine's not very wide, and so everything that my neighbor does impacts me. You know, so, and if we're really gonna be serious about cleaning up blight in our community, you know, we need some ordinances that are very definitive, that we can actually enforce. Such as, I know we've had problems in the past with people parking fifteen cars in their front yard.
Well, the council, the planning commission gave the council a, a plan for three years ago on minimizing driveways, and the council did not accept the planning commission's recommendation, because people on the council had four and five cars, and they wanted to have their four and five cars.
This has been.
And their driveway.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about cars in a driveway, I'm talking about cars in the yard.
Well, they're in the yard too, they're in the yard.
You have six items.
They're in there with the snowmobiles and with the fish houses and, you know, the boats and everything.
Well, you know, we live in a lake community, I mean.
Oh, see, that's what I keep saying, the excuse, but you know what? You live in a lake community, then you, you need to be able to afford to take care of your toys.
I mean, I would be happy if we restricted, I got a fish house in my front yard that I would love to leave.
But getting back to the position, I think one of the things that we also have to recognize, we talked about this at the fire commission, and that is, the fire department overwhelmingly gets a lot of emergency calls, which, you know, people falling,
Yeah.
wellness calls and things like that, and the police department evidently is referring a lot of calls to fire. So we've, we did ask that fire and the police get together and talk about
Right.
better
Coordination.
coordination in those calls, so that's taking up a lot of time. So it's, you know, everything is really multiple layers of, of conflict and, 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 you know, prioritizing. And maybe what we do need to do is create another position. That may be the resolve, but.
I, I think what I would recommend for you, Jesse, is, since you're our only employee, is that you're responsible for our enforcement position, right? I think we need to look at that and reimagine what that needs to look like going forward. It's not working, so whatever we're doing now is not working.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do to fix it? And I think, look at other cities, look, you know, I know this specific position, and because of the fire, you know, multiple jobs, right? I get that, you know, you're gonna, if there's an emergency, sorry, I'm not gonna, you know, respond to your email, I'm gonna go put out a fire. Again, so we have a, we have a, and I'm not saying anything about the person doing it at all, I'm only saying the complaints, and then people come here, or people email me, or call me, and say, I just can never get a response, I cannot get an email back, I cannot, there's no communication. And it's, it's not good, it's not, and it falls, well, for me, I'm speaking for myself, but it falls on us.
Well, it does fall on us, because they're calling us to get some reaction, and, you know, Jesse and I have had the same conversation, and how to fix this discourse between a complaint and Jesse can't follow up with everything, but who within your layer of, you know, group, you know, maybe every Friday, you look this list over and go, okay, these are two-year-long problems, we're gonna have Jesse always call this person, and just give them some feedback. Sarah may be at the front, can, she, she's aware of what the problem, you know, two-year problems are. Maybe Sarah can be in charge of, just, once a week, just following up with some of these ongoing problems, that we do end up looking like we're not doing what we, and I don't wanna, I don't take on a problem without trying to find a solution for somebody. So when you tell me that, yep, somebody's gonna follow up, I go, good, that's great, I know somebody's gonna follow up, and then I get a call going, nobody followed up. You know, it just makes us look really inept.
Right.
And, and I, I constantly always praise our, our staff, because we have an amazing staff. But we are falling short in, in feedback and, and just communication with our residents who, who deserve to just be followed up with, even if they don't like what the comment is. Most people just wanna get a call back, especially after five emails and phone calls, and nobody has responded to them. I, that would drive me insane, it's one of my biggest pet peeves.
Yeah, it also goes to setting expectations, so if Sarah on the front desk is calling, taking these calls, you know, she'll say, okay, well, I'm gonna turn it over to our, you know, enforcement person, and they'll have to come take a look at it. You know, then that person is expecting someone to come out, so we just stop the process right there. What's the next step, you know, and it's also, some of these, and I don't know if Sarah is equipped to even answer these type questions, but, you know, some of them are gonna become a legal issue, which obviously will slow the process down, which will take people longer to respond. So if we know that it's something like that, it's simple training, maybe we do a better job of saying, okay, Sarah, if somebody wants a building tore down, it's gonna take a legal opinion, and we'll have to get back to that person, and let them know, this will take time, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight.
Why don't we set something on our twenty-twenty-six priorities for?
We did, it's called good customer service for residents.
Yeah.
But like, that's not definable, yeah.
But I think we've given the challenge to Jesse.
Cause we could say like, did we hit it?
Let's let him, let's let Jesse solve the problem, we've given him the challenge.
But I don't wanna say good customer service, 'cause then like, you know, I could say like, well, I think we checked that box, and you could be like, no, we didn't.
Yeah, well, Sarah's pleasant, she's just a bum.
Like my quick solution, I don't know that it's right, but I floated like the part-time code enforcement officer, I don't know if that's the best, but like, you know, I haven't done the homework to see what our neighboring similarly sized cities, how they handle it, or maybe they don't either, I don't know, but I don't know what the right answer is, but I think we'd all be willing to, if it's, if it's budgeting a part-time position, I mean, I'm.
But technically, that's what we have, we have a part-time position.
Very part-time.
Okay, so then, I think, again, I think Jesse needs to come back and say, here's the solution, guys, and this is what we're gonna do, and maybe it's just, we're gonna follow a better response thing in the CRM.
We don't have a part-time position.
Cause part-time is less than thirty hours a week.
We have a split position.
Yeah, if it was twenty-nine hours a week.
Part-time is one person who works part-time.
I think, it sounds like we've all had a conversation with Jesse about our frustration with, with protocol on this, so why don't we let you come up with a solution presented to us, and hopefully it's gonna be, solve a lot, a lot of communication issues between residents and our staff.
We can also do a better job of leveraging technology, which is another thing I think we've been short on.
Yeah.
In a lot of areas.
Yeah.
Without getting into, I, I had some comments earlier that I was going to share, but I don't really wanna get into complaining data in a public meeting. The other thing too is, that's one thing we have to balance as well, is every time we create a new spreadsheet and move data around, we're creating more data. And when, when or if we set up something new, that's what we're going to caution, is that if by doing this new process, we're creating hundreds of new documents, it's just making more of a backend data retention issue, so. And not to mention how some of that is classified as private, you know, complaining data is private, we can't share that with people, so. I'm not gonna disagree with anybody about how we get back to people, or that there's better ways to communicate, I just wanna caution that it's, we're gonna do our best to try to minimize the amount of new data we're creating, if, if somebody sends an email that says, hey, my neighbor's doing X, Y, and Z, that's data, and if we move it around, so. That's just where my head's going right away, it's not a comment on the actual facts of the.
So don't you think that when someone complains, and then it's been a month, and we've been on the same chain, I know we have, it's, it's out there. And then they go, what's the update on this? And then I usually respond and copy you, because they copied me on your, or whatever, and then I say, Jesse, what's the? And then they do, okay, then a month later, what's the update again, right? And a month later, what's it, or two weeks later, right, and it's, I, I don't know, I don't know, you've gotta figure it out. But I, I can't believe that other cities don't have some kind of process that's compliant, that they can respond. I mean, in my work, if I did that to my clients every day, I wouldn't have clients.
Yeah.
Right, and that, like you said.
These residents pay our taxes that, that allow us all to sit here.
Or could we just start with returning a phone call or an email? You know, when a resident says, I've, I've sent three emails and left two voicemails, now whether or not you're getting them, I don't know, but if Sarah's sending that person to your voicemail, and you're not listening to voicemail, then let's not send them to your voicemail, let's find a better person to send that person to, who can actually respond to the, the complaint. And then to manage the residents' expectations, you know, there you can come up with, you know, every couple of weeks, we'll try to deal with the two-year-long problems, every three weeks, we'll deal with, why is Duane sixty-six not being? I mean, you know, you can come up with your, we trust you to do that, but I think for most of us, the frustrationists and for residents, they just don't even get any response whatsoever, in mo, in many cases, not in all cases.
I'd like to do what you said before, maybe asking, you know, Jesse to look at neighboring cities and just find best practices for what works for them, because we don't need to reinvent anything.
No.
Someone's doing something that works pretty good, we just need to.
Well, and he's the, he's the CEO of our city, so, if, if there's something, if there's an issue with the person that's doing it, or because he's getting pulled in different directions, or whatever, we need to resolve that. If it's, we need another person, we don't have, that, he doesn't have time.
That's what I kinda want.
I don't, I don't really care what the solution is, like, we just gotta fix the solution.
I'm just mentally prepared for that, though, you know, I think I know everyone's busy, and it's not like, you know, it's probably gonna need to be someone else to handle that.
And that's fine, if we have to re.
I'm ready for that.
I know you, you were, you were the one who mentioned a few months ago in our finance meeting, that we wanted to take, if we kept the levy higher, to take that and, and maybe take that, so. Think outside the box on how we can fix this, but it's been going on a long time, and we just can't keep doing it, so. Beyond that, you're doing amazing. And all you guys are doing amazing, thank you.
Yeah, of course, we love our staff.
Yeah, we do.
This is just a little ding in the armor that just needs some attention.
Yeah, it does.
Well, your first meeting, Leila, doesn't usually go that way, I don't think, they are long, you know. Welcome. Does staff have any, anything you wanna talk about, number ten?
Turkey Bingo next Tuesday.
Cool.
Where?
Right up, right up the street here, Mount Fire Auxiliary.
Oh.
Oh, nice.
So I didn't know that was going on, okay.
We got all the other A through Ds, anything else you want to have? All right.
I didn't know we.
Could I say something?
Uh, no, we're done with, we can talk after, but we're done with public comments, sorry. Uh, number eleven, we're gonna adjourn, can I get a motion to adjourn? Any second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, all right, we're adjourned.